Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, June 24th. It is 7:05 PM. This is the regular meeting of the town council. Will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following town council members present in chambers, Prisco, Kohat, Formicella, Aurora, Duvva. The following town council members are remote. Lapelis and Reed. Following town council members are absent, Maur and Wales. Mr. First Selectman, we have a presentation of a municipal proclamation.
Well, yes, we do. We have Massey softball here, the ongoing champs, the champs of all champs. They win everything. Is there anything you guys didn't win? Is there any award this year the state of Connecticut offers that one of you on the team did not get? The answer is no. The answer is no. You clean house. And first year is first election. It makes me so proud. I've been a big supporter of you guys. All of you know, many of you know me. I've been to many of the games and I'll tell you, it's impressive. Girl softball Monroe is real deal. And because of that, we invited you all here and I have a great proclamation for you guys. So do we, Mr. Lido, should we ask the captains to come up? Should we have everybody come up? What do you think is the best way to go about this?
That's Coach Barone's decision.
Coach Barone, how would you like to do this? They can all come up. They can do whatever they want. They own town council chambers tonight. They are the stars of the evening. So let's go. Let's do this. Ready, guys? Girls?
Champions?
I will button my top button.
We're going to get a picture for the patch, right?
This is fantastic. How many of them are you? Our game is not going to be important. This is not going to work. All right.
Rarely happen that Ava Moretti goes home for her birthday party. I love you too.
So this is a proclamation for the Massey High School Girls 2024 Softball Team. Whereas Massey High School Girls Softball Team finished the 2024 season undefeated with a record of 27 to zero. And whereas on May 22nd, the Panthers were playing the SWC title with a six-four win over Newtown. The Panthers from 2004 to bottom of the fifth, when Julio La Pulis hit a grand slam to tie the game. The game was tied at four in the bottom of the ninth when Ava Moretti homered to left field, scoring two runs for the walk-off win. And whereas the Massey Panthers beat the Ellington Knights 4-0 to win their sixth consecutive Class L state championship on June 8th at Yukon's Burrell Family Field. Julio La Pulis threw a one-hit shutout with no walks and had 13 strikeouts. The Panthers struck first in the second inning when Alyssa Castillo scored on an air run throw on Siena Perpetuals. In the fourth inning, Aubrey Zuvashi Ramos double pushed the lead to 2-0 before Madison Aguero threw a run homer in the bottom of the fifth. And whereas the Massey Panthers were awarded the CHSCA Team of the Year for their perfect season. And now therefore, I, Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of Town Monroe, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 24th, this Massey High School Girls Softball Team Day in Monroe. Signed by me. Congratulations. Your girls make Monroe a great championship. Did I hand you your diploma?
And thanks for the late in your birthday party for this. I really appreciate it.
Hey, you want to get an official picture?
I sure do. Who's going to hold this one? Right? How do we do it? Do you want me to stand?
How did you guys? You want me to stand? You tell me what to do. You don't want to appear as a worker in the back.
Somebody hold that. Are you ready? Thank you. Patience, this is for you. Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you for something, Rooney. Thank you, Massey Softball Team. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for making Monroe great. All right, moving on to item four, the consent calendar. Is there any objection to passing consent calendar as presented? Hearing none on passing consent calendar as presented. I set communication items A through G to be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to item six, public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate? Name and address for the record. We will begin with those members of the public who are here in person.
Mr. Church, 35th Applicate, and I would thank the Vice Chairman. The record on the members for finance, however, the comments tonight are my own and do not represent the board or any other individual member. And I'd just like to address new business items. Pepper Street's discussion, executive stretch was anticipated. I really wish that one of these would be open to the public so we could hear what's going on. But I just wanted to remind the council and the public that the contract for this work was signed back in October of 2029 with an original completion date in the end of 2021. Obviously, that didn't happen. Obviously, COVID was in there, but we're now well beyond that. On August 15, 2022, at this meeting, First Selectman Ken Kellod presented his update on Pepper Street. And I'd just like to read one sentence out of his report. Quote, "At our most recent meeting last week, the contractor's president, his legal counsel made a clear commitment to devote the resources necessary to substantially complete the project by November of this year," I quote, meaning 2022. Following that, on August 15th, you all had an executive session to discuss this issue. And on August 26th, you had a special town meeting where you approved an MOU that was supposed to resolve everything and get the work completed. And here we are, another almost two years later. So I hope you get it all completed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate that's in town council chambers? Seeing none, hearing none, moving on. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate that's here by tablet, computer, or smartphone, or has called it star six on your phone? Or select the microphone with the red line through it to unmute yourself. Once again, is there any member of the public that would like to participate at this meeting that's here online? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm closing public participation. Moving on to appointments. We have one appointment this evening. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24-109, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby appoint Robert Tranzillo of For Pamela Circle to the Board of Ethics for term ending January 11th, 2026.
January 1st.
January 11th. That's what I have here. There is, yeah, there is a typo in the appointments.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vinduva. All right, discussion. Bobby's lived in Town Monroe since 1966. It did not take him long to become a valuable member and leader of the community. Not only did he serve as chairman of the town council, he was also chairman of the Board of Finance. Both are elected positions. The volunteerism continued as he served on the Parks and Recreation Commission and a long-term member of the Monroe Day Parade Committee. He has been an active member of the Monroe JC since St. Jude Church and has volunteered for the vast majority of his 58 years in which he's lived in the town of Monroe. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Anthony Marchiano, who has completed the Monroe Town Charter requirement of serving three consecutive two-year terms on the Board of Ethics. Is there any other discussion? I will note for the record that Mr. Tranzillo was interviewed in LNA and his appointment was moved over to the town council. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of this nomination, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none passes seven to zero. All right, moving on to action items. Action item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair, any update?
We've not had a meeting in a while.
Thank you very much. Item B, Town Council Plan Zoning, Public Works and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Duvva.
No update.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Town Council Command Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet tonight. As we just identified, we did have an interview, but I believe we have been informed of that. We also talked about two other topics tonight. One was the First Amendment to the Stepney Firehouse Contract. The other one is the Open Gov Software Agreement. So both of those were discussed and passed to you tonight. That's it.
Thank you very much. Item D, Strategic Planning Committee. We have not met since our last town council meeting. Item E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. Councilmember Aurora.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. And item S, our First Selectman's update, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will apologize in advance for this lengthy update, but I've been very busy. In operations, the historic society, I met with the members of the society to discuss options for the Bearley House, Beersley House and property. The Beersley House is owned by the society. However, the town of Monroe owns the property. I recommend that the council take the time to visit this location as everyone is welcoming ideas on how to proceed with this historic property that needs considerable maintenance. Employee Appreciation Day, Monroe resident Dave Cuban and his family-owned business Planet Pizza supply food to our dedicated town employees. Members of all departments attended, directors and plays alike, as well as many members of Monroe PD and DPW. Thank you to our municipal staff for making our town hall the friendly environment it is today. Our citizens are noticing and vocalizing their appreciation for the kind culture and proactive work being accomplished by the municipal sector. Sad news, Michael Manjos has stepped down from chairman of Board of Finance. Mike has kept Monroe on a very responsible and fiscally conservative path for over a decade while working with all personalities to make the best decisions for Monroe. I have great admiration for Mr. Manjos for his years of offering his expertise to the Board of Finance. And it's impossible to find anyone that has ever worked on budgets with him to say they did not learn something from his leadership. He will be greatly missed and my hope is whoever has chosen to fill his shoes will bring the same energy and diligence to the position. It has been honor working with you, Mr. Manjos. Great news, we received our bond rating and we once again AAA bond rated town, which is a great achievement. The Director of Finance, who is here, Mr. Bonavsky, informed me that we received our bond rating from S&amp;P Global Ratings. I'm happy to report that we have been signed a AAA bond rating with a stable financial outlook. So thanks again for your diligence and hard work, you, Heidi Mead, Manjos, that's kept this town in the fiscal path it's on. So thank you. Emergency Services Update. As you know, over the weekend, we had significant winds, rain and hail surge through parts of Monroe Saturday and Sunday evening. The extreme weather left many residents without power, approximately 1,850 in total. My officers were in contact with the Department of Public Works and Police Chief during these events. Our officers blocked roads temporarily where needed and kept DPW notified of hazards needing immediate attention. The Department of Public Works worked through tonight on Saturday, clearing trees along with the EverSource Tree Crew to take care of any trees leaning against power lines. Our DPW was called out again early this morning for a downed tree on Musso Road at 1:30 AM. The Parks and Recreation Director, Missi Orros, reported Doc Silverstone Drive was blocked from downed trees and closed the park temporarily until it was safe to pass. A cursory visit to Great Hollow by May revealed several large oak trees have fallen and created a very heavy and timely job for crews on scene. The park was opened at 1:05 PM Sunday afternoon. EverSource is very responsive during this storm event as well. Cleanups are ongoing on the walking trails, so please enjoy the parks with caution. Thank you to all departments for the excellent communication and hard work to get our town back on track. You don't have this on the update, but I added this. Detective Buckley retired after 19 years of service to the Monroe Police Department. She was a favorite among youth detectives and she will be sorely missed. So we wish Detective Buckley luck in her future endeavors. So thank you for your service. Onto paving. Paving update. So paving has been done on several roads by contracted vendors and our public works department. As many of you know, last year's repairs were done using our personnel. However, the rental of a six-foot paver, although helped keep our road safe and operational, the appearance was not optimal. This season, we opted to rent a 13-foot paver, which allows our road section repairs to extend curb to curb. And the transitions from old to new pavement are much smoother. All these paving projects have been seen by me and I'm happy about the progress Public Works is making on the in-house ability to pave our roads. This not only allows us to make repairs on our own schedule, but there's also a cost saving, which I'm going to calculate as the season progresses. At this point, this is a new way of doing things for us. So I don't have the comparisons between hiring a contractor and our labor force. So as that evolves, I will let you know. So community update. Here's a long one. And former First Selectman Ray Baldwin is here. This is how long it took to get on here. Donalyn Wales asked me about it. For the Trumbull Veterans and First Responder Center that we all both attended. Over a month ago, Trumbull had a groundbreaking event for their new state-of-the-art facility on Whitney Avenue. This facility is used by our veterans in Monroe and will serve those who served us very well in the near future. We had a ribbon cutting in 838 Main Street at Strength Fitness, I believe. I have it as Strength Ribbon Cutting. But this ribbon cutting was held on Friday, June 14th. This fitness center officer personal training and tips for safe and effective workouts. Thank you to everyone who showed their support. State Representative Tony Scott was also present at that ribbon cutting. Jockey Hollow Middle School graduation, superintendent myself and also state rep Tony Scott and other dignitaries attended the ceremony on Tuesday, June 11th, which awarded 268 graders with their certificates of recognition. So congratulations to those kids moving on to high school. Massey High School graduation, superintendent myself and also state rep Tony Scott and other dignitaries attended the graduation ceremony, which was held on Thursday, June 13th. Congratulations to the class of 2024. Fairways to Hope Golf Classic, held by the Center of Family Justice, held their annual Fairways to Hope Golf Classic on Monday, June 17th at the Mill River Country Club in Stratford. Had the opportunity to speak at this event, which was well-attended, the golf classic benefits program services for children impacted by physical and sexual abuse. Thank you, CFJ, for all that you do. As you know, we have a liaison from Monroe to the Center of Family Justice. So they've been kind enough to include me in all their events. Production Metals. So Production Metals has been an outstanding investor in the future of Monroe. As this is a global business, they employ a staff adding 80-plus new jobs to the Monroe job market. Myself and state rep Tony Scott attended a ceremony in celebration of Production Metals' continued success in Monroe. Chamber of Commerce Dinner. This dinner was held on Tuesday, June 18th and was well-attended. The chamber has welcomed approximately 40 new members since last July with a total of 115 members. The chamber continues to welcome new businesses to town in addition to hosting several networking events. That is run by Ray Giovanni. Great job by Ray and it was actually a great event. The lacrosse girls, lacrosse girls like the softball girls, they, for the first time in program history, they won the states. I was honored to attend the banquet for the Massey Girls Lacrosse Team on Monday, June 10th. It was an honor to present them and the coaching staff with a proclamation for their successful dedication and teamwork, which led them to win the 2024 CIAC Lacrosse Class L Championship. So congratulations. It's been a great year for Massey sports. The Farmers Market, despite the changeable weather, our Farmers Market opened June 14th and will continue to run every Friday from 3:00 to 6:00 until October 25th. Strawberry Festival, the Monroe Congregational Church held its 52nd Annual Strawberry Festival. While I was unable to attend, I was informed it was very well-attended as it always is. So once again, another amazing event. The Bridgeport Regional Business Council Annual Luncheon. So the Bridgeport Regional Business Council invited me to attend their annual luncheon, which was held on Thursday, June 20th at the Trumbull Marriott. During the luncheon, there were several panel discussions, network opportunities, a launch of the new MetroCog website. So MetroCog is what we're involved in, this metropolitan community of governments. So that was actually very well-attended and well-done event. The Center of Family Justice had their annual dinner. I was honored to attend the annual dinner for the Center of Family Justice on Thursday, June 20th at the Trumbull Marriott. The annual dinner recognized many community partners, staff volunteers, donors, students, parents and community leaders. They do an outstanding job, CFJ, so I'm proud to be part of them. As a town, we should also be proud to be part of them. Social Services. I received sad news from Mary Ann in Social Services last week. It was brought to my attention that there was a resident in town living in deplorable conditions. Through teamwork with our social services department, we were able to secure an emergency hearing with probate court in Trumbull regarding conservatorship within 24 hours. This swift action provided the resident with the assistance they were unable to obtain on their own. So great job by Mary Ann and thank you to well-Trumbull probate, Monroe probate. Thank you for taking that case quickly and getting that resolved. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's our First Selectman's update for the evening. We've no matters of unfinished business tonight. Item A, Resolution 24-110. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24-110, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of Town Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the First Amendment to the Stepney Firehouse Roof Contract and any associated documents binding between Young Developers LLC or the Stepney Firehouse Station 2 project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vinduva. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town previously issued requests for proposals for to replace with the two roofs at the Town Home Firehouse as operated by the Stevenson-Stepney Fire Department. This project was approved and through the RFP process, Young Developers LLC was awarded the construction contract for Stepney Firehouse Station Number 2 Roof Project under Resolution Number 23-112. Due to material weather delays, Young Developers would like to extend the contract to a newly proposed completion date, July 31st, 2024. This also has a letter of opinion from the town attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-110, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes seven to zero. Moving on to B. Resolution 24-111. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24-111, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the software agreements and any associated documents binding between Open Gov Incorporated for hosted software and professional services. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Enid Lapelis. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, last council meeting, we had Open Gov come give their cursory presentation as to what they do. So for your review and consideration, attached are software agreements binding between the Town of Monroe, Open Gov and CR cog. That's a typo. It should be CR COG, Capital Region Community of Governments, for the hosted software and professional services that were presented at the June 10th, 2024 Town Council meeting. Additionally, that 4.3 of the town purchasing policy exempts the proposed purchase from the public bidding process because the purchase would be procured through a public consortium. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided an opinion letter. Also, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, I do have people that offered to speak on behalf of this software, our own staff, Kathleen Gallagher, who's our P&amp;Z administrator, as well as John Morris, who is our building inspector, as well as Ray Baldwin, who is the former First Selectman of Trumbull, who currently works with the city of Shelton. He was nice enough to allow us to come visit and spend some time with the P&amp;Z staff there to see how it worked out. So it was great that you gave us that opportunity, Ray, because it gave us firsthand knowledge and insight as to how this program has assisted in Shelton and may help us here. So without that be, without any more statements, whoever would like to, I guess, I'll bring it back over you.
Just come down. Whoever wants to go first can just introduce yourself at the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here as the council. Two years ago, I started with the city of Shelton. And the mayor asked me to do an evaluation of the operations for the land use bodies, planning and zoning, building department, WPCA, engineering and so forth there, to see how they're operating. One of the first thing I noticed right away is they were still doing paper applications and so forth. So they had reams of paper. It was a mess in the offices. Things weren't getting handled quickly enough. They had tried to institute a program called Munichity, but it didn't work. So we looked around, long story short, looked around at a number of communities, Stratford being one of them, and they were nice enough to invite us down there to take a look at their operation of Open Gov. We brought our staff down, office staff down. They fell in love with the program. They actually, they loved it. The key to the operation of the program is to have good people in place in the various departments who want to implement it then, so they can, you know, hit the ground running with this program because it's very, very effective. And it took us just about a year to get it live. And once we got it live, it was the residents in the city of Shelton, as well as the staff, just loved it. Our staff was out with tablets. They do all their reports. They do photographs in the fields. Everything is done electronically, so there's no paper involved. And one of the other key things is there's a program where people file the applications to pay for it online as well. So there's a trail there. There's an accounting package that goes with it. And it's just worked out well. Residents love it too, especially developers, because they can do all their applications at their leisure. They can do them on the weekend. They can do them at night. Anytime they want to do them. The staff can track it. All departments can track the progress of the application going through. Nothing gets slipped through the cracks. It worked out so well that you implemented it in our purchasing department too. So all our bids are online. All the things that come in are checked out by our finance department. There's a link to our finance department so they can track all the operations that are going on. So it's been really, really good for the city of Shelton. There's about 55, I think, cities and towns throughout the state of Connecticut uses this program. So I'm not even paid for it, so I'm just here. The town of Trumbull has recently implemented Open Gov. So, you know, there's plenty of support for your staff if they have any questions whatsoever.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
How many modules does Shelton have?
I think two.
You have the two modules in Shelton?
Well, we have the one Open Gov program is a module for all the land use. And then there's a module for the purchasing department, which is linked to the finance department. I understand you don't have a purchasing department in Monroe. You do it all through the finance department and then the First Selectman. It might be worth taking a look at if you run into an issue, if you have a lot of bidding issues. There's no controversy about people getting there, saying they got their bids on time or not. It's documented. They can do it at home. You can do it anywhere they want to. It's really helped our staff tremendously.
And you said that the public enjoys, or it's a better experience for them?
In the beginning, the new program like this always a little bit of reluctance on the part of people who aren't computer savvy, maybe one of them, to use this program. But people take it. It's very simple to do. What we did, we followed Stratford's lead. We have a kiosk on the third floor where our offices, the zoning offices are. And we can, if a resident comes in and they're not computer savvy and they need some help, there's a computer setup there and our staff will be able to help them fill out the application. Yeah, it's submitted, so it's done properly. It's picked up. Most of those folks are the ones that are only going to come in maybe a couple of times in their lifetimes to do an application. The developers and the builders, they use a constant plate. It's really, they help them track where a project is.
Thank you very much. So is that all public record? Any applications?
All of it is public record. Some of the things, some of the information that's inputted on there is not privy to the public. Some of it. I couldn't tell you exactly what it is. Until the application is completed, some of that information is restricted.
But generally, you can access it online versus having to come to the office in the old.
If a neighbor is filing an application for a building permit for a garage or an addition, you'll be able to see what the progress is on that project.
So, Mr. Baldwin, is there a
is there a cost savings to the town, uh, you know, from application fees and, and employee time, you know, the, the, at least the initial, uh, investments? You know, it's a decent chunk, chunk of money.
There's a trend, a trend of savings. And I'll tell you where it comes from. It's ordinarily, these folks would be out in the field, and let's say they had a, a dozen pending, uh, inspections that they had to make. They would have to go out there, write it up, take pictures, come back, input it onto a, a worksheet that they have in the office. Now, everything's done on a tablet. They report it, goes back to the office. The tracking begins. They take the photographs that they have to do. They, we use it with zoning enforcement. We use it with play. Um, all of that information is now inputted into a, a computer so they can track it. Big thing was handling checks and money. People come in and they want to, you know, pay for. Some people were coming in cash and so forth. That's not a good situation to have. So you can pay, you pay, you're required to pay online. So everything is, uh, paid, everything is transferred into the right, uh, account. And so the accounting, the, uh, finance department can track everything into each department. Fees are different, so. We also charge a slight, uh, technology fee as part of the application process. So, for instance, if there's an application, it's, uh, a five hundred dollars, five hundred dollar application, there may be, uh, thirty or forty dollar technology fee that's, uh, that's tagged onto it. That helps pay for the cost of the OpenGov. So you could do the same thing here.
Totally. And you may or may not be able to answer. I- in your opinion, from what you've observed, does the program ultimately pay for itself?
I don't think it completely pays for itself, but what we found is it pays for a big part of itself. It also saves some personnel. So positions that we might have to have had people in place, in other words, collecting checks and doing work like that, we've had, we've been able to, uh, phase out some, some positions, save money that way.
Thank you.
Oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Kathleen Gallagher, the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the town of Monroe. Um, I would first like to open up my comments by just doing a general thank you to everyone on Town Council. Um, when I had started with land use six months ago, um, we inherited, I inherited a project that was a lot bigger than I had anticipated. Um, was putting in a tremendous amount of hours in order to deal with the backlog of applications and complaints and violations that hadn't been addressed for our public. Um, the first electman was very gracious and kind, um, always lending an ear to really try to work through what the issues were going to, and was very, very supportive of land use. Um, so we have recently hired a weapons enforcement officer. Um, we, as a department, our, uh, morale is just up because we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We feel like we have staffed in to better address the needs of the public and the community. Um, and so just a, a very sincere thank you to everyone in Town Council for really supporting the first electman um, and him really making the effort to support land use so that we can be a better staff and more efficient and hopefully a more responsive department to the community. The really, the last piece of that that we're still really struggling with is really our record keeping. Um, everything's done by hand. Um, and everything is done by permit number. So what that means is when a resident comes into town hall and they want to get all of the permits for their address, we have to go into a hand Excel file. We have to look up every single old permit number. If there are ten permits, we go into ten different files, some of which are upstairs, some of which are in the basement, um, and try to pull everything that is relevant to what they are looking for. Um, it's a lot of opportunity for human error, um, people putting things back in the wrong spots, um, doing everything by hand and making notes, um, and not necessarily being able to give them everything that they need. Uh, what OpenGov will allow us to do is really consolidate that last missing piece. Um, I always tell staff, record keeping, record keeping, record keeping. We're helping ourselves in a year. We're, we're helping the future version of ourselves in five years, in ten years. So when residents come in in ten years and want to know what happened on the property for the last ten years, we are going to have better records. To be able to have OpenGov will allow us to do it by address. Everything is going to be consolidated by, by address, even departmentally. So the building department's records are going to be with zoning, zoning's going to be with them. Violations are going to be able to be more easily accessible, and it's just going to help staff be able to do their job better. In addition, it allows us to be more transparent for the public. You are now going to be able to see that the Planning and Zoning Administrator had this sitting in their queue for a week. Um, it's going to be able to hold, the public is going to allow us to be held more accountable. It's also going to allow them to access their records. Um, and so it'll just allow the planning zoning department to be more transparent, which is something that we're hearing from them all the time, and we're happy to do. We are just having a hard time sometimes staffing to find people to go back into the records or to track it down. Someone will come in and staff in the building department won't be there, or staff in the zoning part, department won't be there. And so now what we would be able to do with OpenGov is we can track example where that permit is. And we can help residents in a much more effective way, um, than we were able to do previously. Um, so we really see this as, uh, one, really a benefit for efficiency, two, really a benefit for transparency, um, and three, the ability to, um, keep our records in a place that when you do have staff turnover in the future, which hopefully is not soon because we're working really, really hard to retain staff. Um, but when you do have staff turnover in the future, it'll help that next generation be able to come in in a more easy manner. Um, from a development side, as was mentioned, if you have an OpenGov login from our perspective, you can log into any municipality. So people that work in Trumbull, um, that work in Shelton are also going to understand our system. Um, it's going to be easier for them to work through that system. We also know land use is a very, very small community, and we're all pretty close with each other. So to be able to have that support where we're all working in that same system and be able to use each other as resources, Shelton offered to let us look at their backend items. Uh, we just had staff at training and, um, uh, we were like, is anybody using OpenGov? Everyone's like, oh, my goodness, we are. And they all gave us their card. So as a community, we're all better to support each other more. At the moment, we have tried out Laserfish. That's what we are trying to navigate to from a digital perspective. Um, and we just don't have the support to be able to do it. We've desperately tried to do it. We actually went back to doing paper copies just because it was so frustrating. Um, our building, our chief, uh, building official was here tonight. He can talk a little bit of, about that. Um, but to be able to do this as a community, both for contractors and for ourselves, um, it's always easier to be more efficient with that. That's any questions?
Thank you very much. You're safe.
My name is John Morris. It's John Monroe's chief building official. And just briefly touch upon what Kathleen, Ray had to say as far as some paperwork. In the OpenGov, everybody will have access to it in storage videos. Talking about Justin, Assessor's Office. He can actually go and look at inspection reports. And he asked us to put in short videos so that they can actually see what the progress, where the status is, so that they can look at a lot of tasks for the whole time. So again, everything right now is, Kathleen said, is paperwork. We have to dig up old files and new files, and we look to the fire marshal for blocking paperwork. So that will go away. And I believe it was in two thousand and eighteen, the state of Connecticut mandated that municipalities started storing electronic pository for paperwork, and we're not there. Uh, we have a file microprocessor system that's about sixteen years old, and it's getting old. You can have three different people go to the same address and not pull up the same results. So we recently had two people come in and do a title search on one property, and they got different results. So that didn't look good for us, and not much we can do with it. The system that we're trying to work with now, Laserfish, does not have the capacity to store what we're looking to store. Um, I've, my last jurisdiction worked with a software that is similar to, but had its shortcomings. As far as storage capacity. So to be able to take and put everything in, all of your documents, all of your plans, your videos, all your inspections. This way, the fire marshal can go there, Kathy can go there, Justin can go there. It's a huge benefit and time saver.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair. I was on the last page where we have the service terms, the service dates. It says July first, twenty twenty-six, July first, twenty twenty-five, and then July first, twenty twenty-second. Should that first one be twenty twenty-four? Am I, am I correct in that?
Mr. First Electman, or Mr. Town Attorney?
See, this twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, and now twenty twenty-six again. I, is that, should that be twenty twenty-four, that first one? Are we looking to implement it like as soon as possible, like July first? Yeah.
That would be for the new budget.
Right, yeah. So, yeah. So should that be twenty twenty-four then?
Twenty-four.
Day seven, one twenty-four. Next year's budget or there's a service terms?
I'm a, sort of almost, it's past the middle of age.
It's the, it's
Oh, yes. That's a catch. You have the service date there, so it'd be Ju- July first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Persico. Let's, uh,
Are you talking about the invoice?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. I saw that and I was like, wait a second.
That is an air owned by OpenGov.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
They want to collect a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars on July first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Right, yeah. We, we, don't even laugh, do we?
You still said, you know what, is it twenty? You might not have wanted to catch that. Is it twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty-four. The first, the first.
It should be for the record, uh,
Twenty-four.
It should be July first, twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I will note that, um, the period of time indicated in the contract is, uh, July first, twenty twenty-four, and terminated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, in the operative agreement that we are considering. Uh, any other discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add, uh, the chairman, Formacello, was just, this is a discounted rate, and I believe Ray could being involved with MetroCog and MetroCog connected to CR cog, there is a discounted rate to municipalities that are connected with CR cog. Correct, Ray? Right? Mr. Baldwin, I just wanted to clarify for the council that this is a discounted rate because our cog is connected with the CR cog.
Yes. Yes.
It's a discounted rate. So there are other municipalities that are not connected with the CR cog that would not get this rate. And I think the discount is in the area of twenty-five thousand dollars or something along those lines, so. Just so you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Moving on to item C, Pepper Street Discussion. Uh, I move the Town Council into executive session, uh, to discuss the, uh, following, uh, topic, Pepper, uh, Pepper Street, uh, Pepper Street, uh, pending litigation discussion. Uh, inviting the town attorney and the first electman. Is there a second? By Kathy Coat. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor of entering executive session, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. We will be entering executive session at seven forty-nine P M. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are back in session. It's Monday, June twenty-fourth. It is eight forty-eight P M. Uh, executive session has ended, which was item C on our new business items. And there were no votes taken during executive session. Moving on to public participation, is there any member of the public that would like to participate on our unfinished business, uh, our new business, unfinished item of new business, which is item C? Hearing none. I'm closing second public participation, and I'm adjourning this meeting at eight forty-eight P M.